...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a living justice for all.
Thank you, Alan, for doing that for us tonight. This is the time we have on our agenda for anybody who would like to speak to the council on anything that is not listed on our regular agenda tonight. It's over in the board and you can talk about, there's two things we can't talk about is if there's a little bit of... For your comments to that agenda item, if it's a matter of, that the city currently is in litigation about, we cannot take any comments or discuss that matter. If it's a quasi judicial land use matter such as a zone change, we're something, we cannot discuss that matter, or a matter scheduled that we know of for a public hearing at some future date. And of course, I will always have the ability to limit the duration of the comments. I've never had to do so, but I retain the right to do that. So is there anybody who would like to speak to the council on anything tonight? If there is, we ask you to come up, state your name fairly loudly again, and then sign the sheet for the record. So is there anybody who would like to speak to the council on anything tonight? Okay, hearing none, let's move on. Tonight's a very rewarding night for us, and this is a night that we get to do a, one of our proclamations, and I think it's a very good proclamation. So what I will do at this time is I'll ask Noah Miller, Noah, if you can come up front here with me. Can I come up here and face the... I said, "Don't be shy." With all, with all the work this gentleman does and everything, I can't imagine him being shy at all. So first of all, Noah, on behalf of the council, thank you for coming tonight. And introduce any of, any of your guests you have here with you tonight.
This is my stepdad, Brad Podge.
Welcome, Brent, to our meeting tonight. So what I'm gonna do is I'm just gonna read the proclamation for Noah, and this is Noah Miller Prudential Spirit of Community Recognition for Recognition Day, Recognition Day. Whereas effective government may be serving the needs of the citizens, however, the soul of our cities, a soul of our city and its vitality as a place to live and work depend on the relationship of families, friends, and neighbors. And whereas strengthening those bonds is not as much in the hands of institutions or governments as it is in the hearts of the people, individuals who volunteer to help people of all ages, races, and religious religions cope with illnesses, overcome hardships and barriers, adjust to social changes, and fulfill their potential, these volunteers are the unrecognized, unsung heroes of our society. And whereas Noah Miller was recently named as one of the state's top honorees in the Prudential Spirit of Community Awards program, he exemplifies the value of volunteer community service and is a role model to other youth and adults in our community. And whereas a surprising number of volunteers in communities across the nation are like Noah, a student contributing time without expectation of reward, other than the gratification that comes from helping others. Some of these young people work in established groups, while others seek new and unique ways to help others on their own. And whereas recognizing these young volunteers and encouraging others to follow their example is the aim of the nationwide program conducted by Prudential Financial, the National Association of Secondary School Principals. It's aimed to reach into every community in all 50 states and the District of Columbia to identify and honor these unsung heroes locally, state by state, and then nationally in the hopes that their recognition will serve to stimulate others to volunteer service. Now therefore, I, Richard L., Rick Olson, Mayor of the City of McMenville, commend Noah Miller, our Prudential Spirit of Community Award Honoree, for his outstanding volunteer contributions to others in our community, and I do hereby proclaim today, April 15th, 2015, to be Noah Miller Prudential Spirit Community Recognition, Recognition Day in McMenville, where I encourage all residents to observe this day and to follow Noah's actions in volunteer community service. And witness where I hereby set my hand and cause official seal of the City of McMenville to be affixed the 14th day of April, 2015. And I guess that's the formal part, but Noah, I'd like to thank you for everything you do. I think you're gonna be one of the key leaders of our community. Be a good man as you are, and make sure what you do, spread, pay it forward, and let a lot of other people learn from what you do. So, there you go. So let's give Noah a big hand. Anything we need to say?
I really wanna say thank you.
Yeah, we're very much, we're honored, we're the ones that are honored to have you with us here tonight because of everything you do. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Noah.
Okay, that's a real honor to do, doing that. We're so fortunate to have teenagers and kids and young adults in our community such as Noah. And now we move to new business, and we have two items of new business. And the first one is Janet Adams is gonna give, who's director of the KOB, and also on the KOB Mayor's Charity Ball Advisory Board is gonna give a report, short report on the 2014 Mayor's Charity Ball. So Janet, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, everyone. A very short report. You might have heard that we ran into just a couple of speed bumps this year with the Mayor's Ball. Our event director needed to step down late in the year, and we did not hear back from a major sponsor that we'd expected to hear back from. And given these two challenges, the Mayor's Ball Advisory Board needed to decide what to do. There was some consideration of perhaps not even having the Mayor's Ball this year, but thankfully, the advisory board did decide to go forward with the ball, although scaling it back a bit. We worried about whether or not it would be successful, whether people would like it, whether it would make any money, and I wanted to let you know that it went well, and people enjoyed it, and we made about $24,000. That is without having done a silent auction, without much of a sponsorship drive, and without that major sponsor. That's the money that we netted just with the event itself. More importantly than that, and our reason for wanting to continue with the ball this year, is that we maintained the level of spirit that we've had in the past. We sold out. Every ticket, every seat was taken, which tells us that folks really enjoy this community event and appreciate the opportunity to support the Kids on the Block program through that. I think the message that I want you to know, in addition to the fact that there's community support behind this, this program, and that we were successful financially, I guess the two messages are that going forward, the response that we got from folks in terms of the survey after the event were that they really liked the scaled back version, the shorter period of time, the appetizers instead of a formal buffet dinner. And so as the Mayor's Ball Advisory Board goes forward, they'll consider those survey results, which impressively, we had over 40 respondents, which is quite a few for, for an event that size. The second piece that I want to make sure you know about is how much of a citywide effort this was. There is a lot of behind the scenes work that I did not know about until this year, when I stepped into this interim position. I want you to know that Marsha Bargary, Rose Lorenson, and Tammy Paola from City Hall put in quite a lot of work and guided me throughout the whole thing. In particular, Rhonda Gretzen from the Finance Department was incredibly helpful. Sean Roberts and Scott Burke from our Information Services Department, they were the ones that took over the website and got that up and running. Jay Pearson, Aaron Johnson, Brandon Arts from the Community Center made sure that the Community Center was ready to go for this big event. I also wanted to thank a few of you. Alan Ruten was the very first person to call and buy tickets the day after the invitations went out, which was a huge relief. I knew that at least one table was sold right off the bat. Scott came to help stuff envelopes, and I know that a lot of people enjoyed some wine from this place called Remy Wine's I hear. So thank you to all of you who supported and came to the event. Looking forward to next year, number 27. It will be on Saturday, February 6th. Anticipate that it'll start at 7:30 or 8 o'clock. We anticipate that we will raise the ticket price slightly, but one of the best pieces of feedback that we got this year is that so many new people were able to attend because the ticket price was lowered just a bit. We definitely want to foster those new folks attending the program and giving to the Kids on the Block program. Anybody have any questions?
Let's start with you, Larry. Any questions from Janet?
No. Are you gonna continue to have this up and run at this next year?
I hope so. It's not my decision, but I hope so.
Great job.
Thank you.
Kelly?
It was lovely to get, really enjoyed it.
Kevin? Any questions? Let's go down to you, Alan.
We enjoyed it a lot, and we really liked the new venue and the pricing and everything. What it allowed us to do, and maybe, and there were several that participated in going out to our local restaurants and dinner prior to the Mayor's Ball, and maybe that's something that could be played up a little bit more next year with the Downtown Association and others, and confuse some cash into the local economy.
I wouldn't say none of that.
You know, we've already had, Alan, just so you know, two weeks ago I had contact with one of our downtown merchants, who is a volunteer. If we, if the Mayor's Charity Ball Advisory Board continues to wanna play on that, you know, being able to go out to dinner and everything, he's willing to do almost all the contacts during, and that's James Tate from Northwest Gifts and Wines. He's willing to work with the MDA and the Downtown Association. I think it's a great deal. I thought that was one of the benefits this year, too. So, Remy?
Thank you.
Mr. Hill?
Janet, you say we sold out. How many did we have in attendance?
It was about 307, you told me.
Great, and I just echo what Kelly and the mayor and Alan shared. It was a great event. Again, it gave you more time to connect with people, and again, I still think there might be a way of doing some type of, of the auction, but it gave you more time to really connect with people and, and network in what people seem to enjoy. So I think we hit a real home run this year.
Yeah, I think for the councilor, the people in the audience that don't know, Councilor Hill is the city council's representative on the Mayor's Charity Ball Advisory Board and work of this year, so we're glad to have, we're glad to have Scott with us. Again, I wanna thank all, you know, all the city employees that, I was gonna mention a lot of them, but Janet did a good job, but also, you know, a lot of the volunteers, this was a really a trying year because we didn't, we still used a lot of volunteers, but because of the scale back event, and we were able to use the decoration from the high school that they had in place, we didn't have to utilize as many volunteers as we did, which in a way is good because we scaled back event. But for those volunteers that put in a lot of time, I think they do it because of the love. I mean, it's just, and I think for almost going as far as canceling, to tell you the truth, I'll be the first to admit that my first impression back when we started talking about this in November and October was that maybe we should, and a lot of discussion did go on whether we should cancel it for this year or not, but I can tell you, I'm glad we did it, and I think we found some things that really worked out, really worked out well for the future. So Janet, thank you for all the work you've done. And Jay, thank you for giving her your support. Okay, do we have, I need to drop back a minute because I was so excited to have Janet come up here and do a report that I forgot about the minutes. So, councilors, in your packet, we have the minutes of the February 24th, 2015, and we're dinner and regular meetings. Has everybody had a chance to look at their minutes? If we don't have any changes or modifications, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the minutes?
So moved.
So moved by Council President Jeffries, second by Councilor Manke. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show the minutes of the February 24th, 2015 dinner, and regular meetings have been approved unanimously by the council. So that takes us down to new business, to our 2015 draft goals and objectives. And Martha, I think I'll let you lead off on that one. You wanna lead off on our draft goals and objectives?
Well, as you remember, at the end of February, we had our strategic planning session. After that, Sue Disciple went back as a facilitator, coalesced what the group had said, and provided back the strategic document you have now. So with the goals and objectives, several were continued, were carried over from last year. We do have a couple of new ones. The one on homelessness will be an attempt to educate ourselves and go forward from that. Also, we have the opportunity to proceed forward on the bonds for the construction for our city. So we look, are excited for that. And then we'll also look to help out our FBO operations at the airport as we look to hire somebody with a larger skill set that can also operate as onsite airport management.
That's good. Is it next Thursday at 6:00, or is it next Wednesday at 6:00? Is our meeting on the...
On April 22nd, it'll be, it'll be the first session for the council to step out on that goal of education on homelessness. And at 6:00 o'clock here at City Hall, we'll join with Oregon's Housing and Community Services with YCAP, with Yom Hill County, commissioners coming from Lincoln County to share his experiences as we begin to educate ourselves on the homelessness issues that our citizens are experiencing.
So I think it's very important that we identify, since we did identify that as one of our goals this year, and a very rightful goal, that hopefully we will get as many of the councilors here as possible for that.
And are we gonna record that meeting or tape it that night? So, I'm out of town, but I really would like to hear the comments that are made in the learning piece.
It'll be taped and then replayed on MCM, and it will be livestreamed with our Dave Adams and KLYC. So with the opportunity for individuals to provide input back online that night, as well as participate in the question and answer session afterwards via digital over the web.
That's coming out, I'd be glad to hear that, because this is one of those issues. Last city council meeting was our first meeting that we've actually had streamed online, and for a transparency standpoint, as we have these important kind of meetings, to be able to be broadcast not only on MCM, but to be able to have a lot of them streamed online, and especially to be able to give feedback, I think is, goes a long way of telling our story and letting people in the community that can't come to the meetings participate in the meetings and view the, view the meetings. So everybody, hopefully everybody will be able to make it. I think it's a really important meeting as we move along that education phase. So do we have anything else? The councilors have any input on the draft goals and objectives? Martha, can you talk a little bit about the scheduling process and how, or not scheduling, the publication process and how we're gonna publicate our goals and objectives this year?
They are ready, we have an initial draft. We'll make any adjustments that you have on the goals and objectives tonight, and then it will be mailed out in the mailer by the end of this week, and it'll also be published on our website. Probably not tomorrow, because I understand that Dave Henman's off, one of his folks is out of the office, but it'll be published by Friday, by the end of the week.
So you'll be able to go out there and look, look at if you don't get one in the, we'll get one in the mail, and that comes normally with your utility? Do we mail that one separately this year?
It'll be mailed separately.
Be mailed separately from the city?
And then what will be different is, since we have it online, we'll provide quarterly updates on what the council is doing for each one of the goals that we present.
Okay, that's great. Okay, that takes us on then to our resolutions. We have several resolutions tonight, and our first resolution is Resolution 2015-15, and that is entering into an intergovernmental agreement with the McMenville Urban Renewal Agency. And Doug, I will turn that one over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, councilors. You have your packet memorandum for me that provides a brief background of issues before you. You also have your packet, a draft resolution, as well as a copy of the intergovernmental agreement, or IGA. Very briefly, the purpose of that IGA is to memorialize the duties and responsibilities of the Urban Renewal Agency and the city as they relate to the implementation and administration of the Urban Renewal Plan. The type of agreement that's before you is, it's found in a number of communities in the state of Oregon that have this relationship to an Urban Renewal Agency of the city. Staff recommends to adopt the attached resolution and IGA, and I would note that as a complement to this, you'll see in your next hearing, the agency are very similar, and actually almost duplicate a copy to be acted upon by the agency.
Okay, do we have any questions from staff, from Doug? Do we have any discussions around the table? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2015-15.
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Hill. Kelly, you want a second? Second by Councilor Manke. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that Resolution Number 2015-15 passed the council unanimously. That takes us to our second resolution. This is Resolution Number 2015-17, establishing a list of firms qualified to provide consulting services related to the design and construction of the street improvement and repair bond projects. So Martha, if you can give us a staff report on that, please?
We actually have two resolutions on for you tonight. 2015-16 is referencing a construction project at Alpine, so and then we also have a resolution for tonight on 2015-17, reference construction projects for the transportation bond. So I'll go over the first one, which is Resolution 2015-16. And if you've been in Alpine during a heavy rainstorm, you may have noticed that it has a tendency to flood. So we're gonna replace a undersized 12-inch storm line in that area between 11th Way and 12th Avenue. And in that project, we received three bids. All three bids were technically acceptable, so we went with the lowest bid, and this resolution will award Kaiser Escavating to carry out the blind work for this.
And Kaiser's done several, several, several projects. Of course, they're a local firm also. Okay, let's take that one then, Resolution 2015-16, and that's approving the contract of the Alpine Storm Sewer Capital Improvement Projects as reported on by our city manager. Do I have a motion to approve that resolution? So moved by Councilor Yoder. Do I have a second? Second by Council Ruten. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that Resolution Number 2015-16 passed the council unanimously. So Martha, if you wanna go on to the 17, please?
You go ahead. Thanks, Mayor. Very exciting times as we now have bond funds, and we are now looking to start the execution of the transportation plan that the citizenry approved in November. First part of that will be to get a cadre of design, individual, divine firms that we can work with to help us flush out what we're gonna do there. And so nine selected firms basically represented a cut above, as there was a distinct scoring drop between the, these nine and those at position 10 and below. Overall, there were 21 applicants, and we scored them on items such as an understanding of what we need and type of projects we're doing, demonstrated the ability to do the aspects necessary to carry out the entire project from inception through completion. Quality is always, of course, a very key discriminator, and then they came back with their thoughts on the project challenges and how they specifically would address them. So after looking at the total packages, we have the nine listed in your package of the 21, and we plan to rotate them, rotate through them as projects come up for the expenditure of the bond, bonds to help our streets.
Okay, thank you, Martha. I think one thing that's really important to me on that, and it's the last thing Martha said, important to me as mayor, is their thoughts on the project challenges and how they specifically can address them? That's very important, because that a lot of time gets into the area, to me, of like value-added engineering and value-added design, where they may come up with things on those projects that we've never thought about, which will help us either make the cost less or improve the project. And I think of all the items that the city manager listed, that's one of the things that mean the most to me. I know we use that at City Water and Light all the time, and they've saved us over 10 years, they've saved us millions of dollars by, they've told us ways to do things that we never even thought about doing them. So, I think that's good. So that being said, thank you, Martha. Is there a, do I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 2015-17?
So moved.
So moved by Council Ruten. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hill. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, then, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that Resolution 2015-17 once again passed the council unanimously. Okay, 18, Martha. Or no, Marcia's doing 18, that's a financial one. Marcia's doing 18. Marcia, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This resolution could certainly be called a housekeeping resolution. As you know, we issued our, told our bondee to first, and this resolution, 2015-18, will revise the transportation bond process, amend the budget allowing us to pay the cost related to issuance, and also there's a couple of projects that we'll be working on in the current fiscal year, so we also need to amend the 2014-15 budget for the new projects.
Okay, do we have any questions for Marcia? Let's Larry, let's start down at your end of the table.
No, I have a question.
Okay, Kelly, any questions from you?
No questions.
Okay, I'm gonna save Kevin to last. How about you, Alan?
No questions, thank you.
Remy?
No, sir.
Scott? Council President Jeffries, any questions from you? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2015-18.
So moved.
So moved by Council Manke. Do I have a second? Second by Councilor Ruten. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, again, let it show that Resolution Number 2015-18 passed the council unanimously. You know, I think on this one and a lot of other things that may go unnoticed that our financial and our accounting staff, Marcia and her staff, and all of, with, with this and the work that had to go into the bond sales, the work that had to go into accounting, the work that had to go into the financing, at the same time, we're trying to do the budget. So I think, Mar, if on behalf of the council, myself, Marcia, just make sure you pass on to all your staff how proud we are of them all and the effort they put in, and that goes to yourself, of course, also, for all the work and how you keep all this straight at this period of time. I don't have a clue, but make sure everybody gets the council's. Thanks for doing that, for doing that.
Thank you, Marcia. We will do that. I also would like to recognize it really is a team effort, along with my staff members and Mike and Martha, and you know, it takes a lot of people to put up like 18, or 22 million dollar bonds.
Yeah, I think one thing the public might be interested, and Marcia, you might be able to tell this, because our, because of our bond rating and what it is, the type of interest we've been, we saw in our bond, which is amazing by itself.
The interest, of course, depends on the maturity date of the bond, but between 2.5 and 5%.
5%, and how many bidders do we have on our bonds?
We had 11, and our municipal advisor had said she had maybe got five.
Five and so.
And then that's what they sell the bonds for.
Right.
The actual rate that we were able to achieve it is 2.39%.
2.39, and I think that goes to testament to the city management staff council way back from even before I was born, probably, is that how we prudently manage our fiscal resources and, and how we're known around the bonding community and the financial community for making loans, loans to, and I think that goes very good, because that, to the effect of the 2.39 is just, I don't, I don't even think the bypass got that many, there. I think we got 2.0, McMenville got 2.47 or 2.48 on our bonds. Newberg got 4.25 or something like that, so.
And then we were able to rework some of the existing bonds on this building and on the police station. How much did we save by rewriting those?
It was about $540,000 in net present value savings.
Wow. Yeah, so you start adding that up and what, and the park bonds, was it the park bonds that we did and saved maybe a million dollars a couple of years ago? Big savings, really.
Yeah, and I think that's what, between the management staff and Marcia and her group, I think that's a lot of the things that go unheralded, that people don't realize. You think about accounts receivable, and you think about accounts payable, and payroll, and all that. You don't think about just the financial impact, the work that our management team and Marcia and her group does, and what that really saves the citizens of McMenville. It's a, it's a phenomenal amount. We just, we're definitely glad you're here, Marcia.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That takes us to the next resolution, and that's Resolution 2015-19, and that's amending...
Did you, I'm sorry, did you vote on that one?
Yeah, I think we voted on that one. Didn't we vote on that one?
I don't have it.
Okay, let's do it again in case we didn't. I'll entertain a motion, is there no more discussion, a motion to approve Resolution 2015- 2015-18?
Rose said we did it.
Didn't we do it, Rose?
Yeah, we did.
I'm really sorry.
That's all right. I get confused.
I was just running around.
So that one, let's move to Resolution 2015-19, and that's amending the 2014-15 budget, general obligation bonds for advance refunding, and 2016 public safety and courtroom and civic building bonds, is what Scott was just talking about. So Marcia, I think if you have anything else you want to add on to that? Okay, if not, then we have, is there any discussion on that refinancing of those bonds? If not, then I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2015-19?
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Yoder. Do I have a second? Second by Councilor Manke. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Gee whiz, hearing none, I'll let the record show that the council has also unanimously approved that resolution. We have one more resolution tonight, and that'll be Resolution 2015-20, and that is to ratify a collective bargaining agreement between the city of McMinnville and the International Association of Firefighters, Local 3099 of the IAFF. We did have a executive session at our dinner meeting, and so I'll turn it over to Chief Rich now. You're supposed to be on this, you're supposed to be on this side.
Turn it over to Chief Rich to give a little overview.
So, chief?
Mr. Mayor and council, I'd like to start by thanking the bargaining team, because it's a group effort, believe me, and Candace and Rose and Steve Rex are at my side during these negotiations. We started bargaining in January, and on April 7th, the 30th of March, we came to a conclusion. The union ratified the contract on April 7th. One quick follow-up on a thank you, Marcia and Christie Crist are huge assets when it comes to working through options and what-ifs. So I really appreciate your help and assistance in getting through that process. So the contract is for three years through 2018. And I think that will be successful for both of us.
Okay, thank you. I think I'd like to pass it on too, to make sure that the firefighters and everything know how much we appreciate their work and how much they actually give to the city of McMinnville and to our citizens also. So any questions, Alan?
No, thanks for all the information that the interview was, listening on that.
Okay, Remy, you have any questions, comments at all? Okay, Scott?
Again, Richard G. indicated, just that collectedness of the negotiations seemed to go smoother this year than it ever has. And I think it just really attests to, you know, we're doing the right things for our people and we're listening, but at the same time, there's a good communication happening between all parties. So thank you.
Okay, Kevin?
Yeah?
Kelly?
Just a thank you to your leadership and everyone else over there, for your wonderful work.
Okay, Larry, anything for you?
Great job, thank you.
Okay, so that being said, then, do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 2015-20?
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Manke. Do I have a second by Councilor Drapkin? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that Resolution Number 2015-20 passed the council unanimously. Thank you again, everybody, on those resolutions. That takes us into our advice and information items. Does anybody have anything? We talked at the dinner meeting, have anything else, anything they'd like to report to the other councilors on any committee and board assignments tonight?
I got something.
Okay, Kevin?
I know the last time we met, I talked about the COGS contract with Cascade West Financing, and we were able to enter into a contract with them, and there was a little bit of give and take, and definitely we gave more than we took on that. But it was a good negotiation, and we feel pretty happy with it. And in your, on your desk is the COG Works, and just a little bit about that loan program that the COG offers. In 2014, we closed 17 business, small business loans, worth over 2.32 million dollars. So it was really important that we were able to get that contract signed, so that's it for the COG.
One of the many great organizations we partner with. COG brings a lot of value.
I think we need to have change in the, the Cascade West Financial, it's made up of a board that kind of makes the decisions, and some of the members of the board aren't as plugged in with their communities as our representatives are. And those representatives that represent the Anvil Counties and Marion County were there and were very, they came and met with us, and they were really well-informed and definitely had our back, but they were in the minority. So, see what we can.
Thank you, Kevin. Anything else from this end of the table, that end of the table? If not, how about Scott?
I just, I just want to just take a few moments. This morning, we met with our Tourism and Lodging Tax Committee in probably, I'm guessing, the third meeting that we've had, but this morning was a real, kind of get a few things done and organized as we're putting together our DMO. And we met for a little over three hours this morning, and we're moving forward with developing our direct marketing organization. And we went way down that path, coming up with a name for the organization, the structure, how we want to envision the next 12 months with a calendar. Bylaws are being written at this point as we deal with this committee that will be funneling the tourism dollars effectively for years to come. And so more to come to the council. Again, we had one, two, three, four of the council there this morning, and Marcia and Martha were there. Again, great discussion, so good things from that perspective.
Yeah, I think we're going to see big things from Visit McMinnville and everything from a tourism standpoint. Great, we got off to a great start, and I'm looking forward to the city doing much like we did with MCM years ago, where we funnel off to its own organization and let them do their jobs, so city government isn't stuck in trying to do tourism promotions. Okay, anybody have anything else? If not, I'd like to welcome Captain Simon. Nice to see you tonight, Tim. So we're down to you, huh?
All right.
Well, hey, you're the best, but we won't tell Matt that. Nice to have you with us tonight, Tim. So Jay, do you have anything?
Mr. Mayor, I will. Makes a little brief announcement. Our next, they were, North West, they were in Park Riding Session, and we held Thursday evening at 6:30 PM on April 23rd. This is our third session. We made good progress behind scenes, and looked into a lot of the, a few new details about how the park might look like and get good feedback. So you're all welcome to participate in the creative play. Our park ranger staff, this year, it's fortunate that we have a couple of our park rangers from last year who are students of Western in the criminal justice program, and they have to do some internship work and provide several hundred hours of volunteer time. So if you want to get a early start, that benefits our program. We hope to have a couple of those folks on the street, in the parks, downtown, beginning possibly next week. That's much earlier to get a good start, and that's going to give us a good early start on the summer. I want to remind you, the annual report, the city's annual report will be on the inside of our cover, so on page two of our summer brochure, which will be out mailed to over 12,000 municipal residents in mid-May, so you can watch that. And finally, on May 30th, we're holding our sixth annual McMinnville Sprint Triathlon, and we always need volunteers to help with some traffic control. We hire some certified traffic controllers at key areas that are the most adjusted, most dangerous, but along the wall, as we had, we closed during that event, so we could use some help. So if you would like to drink some coffee for a couple of hours and be out there between about 8:00 and 1:00, just kind of watch the updates go by, you're welcome to join us. Just let us know when we'll sign you an intersection, probably more likely a cul-de-sac that you blocked, so if someone needs to get out of there and get, you know, downtown or something, we call. Steve Parkey, who helps us from the PD, he tells the S-Works people from on his roadside, he escorts them out safely across that event traffic. So those are the things that are going on, just more briefly. And Kelly, I owe you a full call, and I have to go over to you.
You know, Jay, it's funny, and that's an important job. I like that story about eight years ago on the Hood to Coast Relay. Gresham Chamber of Commerce had some volunteers to handle the area out between Gresham and Orient Road going out towards Sandy that way for the intersection directions. Well, they showed this one guy, one business owner, the direction, you know, of where to tell the people, because it was after dark, showed people, well, they came in, and they came in one way, well, when he drove in, he drove in the other way. So he was out there at the intersection telling everybody to go left like they told him. He sent like the first 75 teams the wrong direction, and nobody could figure out why this school at the next stop, why nobody was showing up. They had to do some time adjustments on that one. So that is an important job, isn't it, Jay? Very important job. Okay, thank you. How about you, Marcia? Anything else new?
Yes, we are wrapping up the, all the work that went into the bonds. Actually, the $18 million in transportation projects will be in the bank on Thursday. So that is when Mike and his crew, them and their, their work will really be done. Also wanted to mention that upcoming budget committee meeting is scheduled for May 13th. So we will be proceeding with the 2015 budget discussion very soon.
Wow, easy. Chief?
Mr. Mayor, two things. If you haven't had a chance to check your city email account, there's information out there about our annual awards and recognition for the McMinnville Fire Department. If you don't have easy access to them, you can find it on Facebook or Twitter, we put it out there on all of those accounts. I'd like to thank the city band for coming out and helping me recognize those that were outstanding performers in our organization over the last year. Second thing, we passed a milestone this year on our medical side, our ambulance side. The council has been kind enough to pass some funds for us. We changed our EMS reporting software, as well as documentation software, and IS has been very supportive of us getting to a point where we are now able to transmit EKGs directly from the field to any hospital that we would send a cardiac patient to. And we had our first successful field test in this last week. So the medic can see the problem in the field directly. We called the helicopter, the helicopter came, the hospital had the EKG in their hand before the helicopter even left the ground. So it's huge in the care of cardiac issue patients to get that information to the cath lab as fast as we can, so they can be prepared, or they need to be prepared for prior to the patient getting in the helicopter. So we had our first successful run on an actual patient this last week or so. So it's one of those things that your support of funds, of the projects, and the IS, and the IT things that are going on within the departments, there's a positive outcome and the improved service levels to the citizens of the community.
Great, good news, good news, chief, good news. Doug?
Nothing yet.
Nothing yet? Does that mean five minutes from now, you might have something?
Nothing to add.
Oh, nothing to add tonight. Rose?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, Candace?
Nothing, thank you.
Martha, you get the last one. Okay, does the council have anything else we need to discuss before adjournment tonight? If none, meeting adjourned. Yeah, we're going to take...